Okay, I'd like to call this meeting of August 11th, 2020 to order. Members of the zoning board of appeals are myself, Joseph Burke, Matt Schmager, Frank Donato, Wendy Tarver, and Michael Wolfe, along with Patty DeCarr from Urban and Economic Development, Jane Coza, Chief Building Inspector, Kate Hartnett, Assistant Corporation Counsel, and Brian Palmis, Commissioner of Urban and Economic Development. We will hear each case individually as it appears on the agenda. When your case is called, state your name and address for the record. After listening to the applicant's proposal, I will ask the speakers for and against the project. All remarks and any questions are to be addressed to the board members only, and shall be limited to two minutes per person. We will then vote on the project immediately following. Okay, first case. ZB A case number 24-20, 2429 Shenango Street, applicant Park Outdoor Advising, owner Park Outdoor Advising. Pursuant to section 2-2968 of the zoning ordinance of the city of Utica, the applicant is seeking a special use permit and an area variance in order to erect a billboard at the above referenced location. Okay. Who's here for Park Outdoor Advising?
Matt Stubbly, General Manager, Park Outdoor, 2429 Shenango Street, Utica. I'm here to follow the follow-up pictures you're looking at right now. The actual billboard is proportionally where it should be. The column might be a little bit off more if it didn't be, that doesn't show it inside the fence. But since the last meeting, I met with Mr. Pierce, who leases out the property to Domino's, and we had a good conversation, and we took the height of his sign. And ultimately, when we walked the property, I think we were both, and bring it in, hopefully he's on, that either way, if I get a variance, the sign will block his a little bit. But if I don't get a variance and don't build the sign, the trees currently block his sign already. And my estimate, he might have a late read if we do take those trees down. So I think the way we put it, the way he said it to me, was, you know, it's really not a good situation either way from whether we build a sign or don't build it, because it can't be viewed currently as you travel northeast anyways. And as you can see, the sign, the face you're looking at now, is when you're traveling northwest, that has no issues whatsoever on any of the property signs too. I'm open for questions on it, or... And one of my thoughts, as I told, I expressed to Mr. Pierce, was that if for some reason, you know, I wasn't able to build a back-to-back billboard there, I would probably seek to modify my application for a single-faced billboard. And even so, it doesn't matter, the trees are already there blocking his sign.
Now, this is, now, did you change the height of the sign, or...
No, it's actually, it just a better rendition, and it's still 30 feet to the overall top of the sign, but it'll end up, I sent an email to Patty, it'll end up, it'd be 20, well, new sign would be six feet above the pole barn, and then it'll be six feet from our fence. And the pole barn, the lower pole barn lip, if you look at it, and the salt box is like 23 feet, 30, 23, no, it's almost 24 feet, and that, excuse me, it's 16'7" to the top of that lower lip, and 23, 23 and a quarter feet to the top of the pole barn. So it'll be just six feet above that, six and change. But no, we wouldn't go over 30 feet, because that's the code.
Brian?
Hello?
Hello?
Please mute your telephone, unless you're a board member at this time, thank you. I'm telling you to mute your phone if you're not a board member.
Patty, do you hear the drawing?
I can't find it yet.
Yeah. Very top middle button, mute. One second. Are you, Joe, are you looking for the technical drawings? What is the picture that you...
Didn't you have the, the plans, the...
The plot plan. I did submit...
Well, how far off the road is this thing? You've got to mute your phone or your computer, please.
I'd have to, I'd have to get the better measurement, at six feet, it's inside our fence, and our fence is another 15 feet to the road, so it can be about, and I have to get an accurate comp, but I'm going to say 18 feet safely. We've got to be, actually more than that, we've got to be 10 feet, you've got to be 10 feet off the wires, so inside of our gate, we're 10 feet off the wires, and then you've got another 10 to 12 feet to the actual road. So I would say same...
Hold on, man.
There's children in the background, can you please mute your telephone? Thank you. Go ahead, Joe, is that what you're looking for?
There we go, yeah, yes.
Yeah.
You know, man, what did you say about the trees? I couldn't quite hear, you were going to take them down?
No, well, if I build a sign, I'm taking the trees down, right? So we can see, so we have a right-hand read. Trees currently do block Mr. Pierce's Domino's sign.
Right.
And if I don't get approved, I have no reason to remove the trees anyways, so he's blocked the way on, when you're traveling northeast. But I did, but I did talk to him about, obviously, being a good neighbor, and, you know, obviously we're not going to post any light businesses on that property, no matter who he leases it with, he has, he has extra space in there. So that's the kind of things that I told him we would do as a good neighbor, not do anything, you know, in your backyard, give them to the lessors. And I think we both agreed that his right-hand read is blocked anyways. But yeah, I mean, I have no reason to remove the trees if we don't build the sign, you know?
Yes, okay.
That view is looked at, we both walked it pretty intensely. He's a nice guy, very, very one to talk to.
Excuse me, Joe, this is Mike Wolfe.
Yes, Mike.
Board member. I drove that road just recently, at request. It doesn't appear that the sign that's being proposed in any way detracts from that area on Shenango. I actually live a couple blocks away, so I was able to go over and take a look. It is a commercial area, and I don't see any residences in the area that would object to it if the owner, and I've forgotten his name already, of the Domino's lot, is in line with it. I don't see any reason not to approve this. That's just my input.
Well, that, that's Mr. Pierce, and I appreciate it, and I, I don't, I don't want to speak for him, but I think we, you know, when we talked, I said, you know, maybe you're on the call, maybe you're not, but we, I think we both agree that he really, he really doesn't have a, a view now. But that's our conversation, you know, I don't, you know, I don't want to speak for him, per se, you know? But I thank you for the, looking at it.
Okay. Any other board members, any questions?
I, I am on the call, Matt.
Oh, hey, Mr. Pierce, how are you?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, anyone here for?
Oh.
Against?
I, I am against.
And you're...
That's okay.
I'm sorry, can you state your name for me, please?
It's Richard.
Thank you. You can go ahead.
Okay. Matt and I met, he's a terrific guy, he's right, the trees in front of him, grown up, and you can see that sign when you're heading, it's very visible when you're heading west. The reason I would be against it, I think it was crap. And I just, there's enough billboards, there's one across the highway, there's one here, I just think it'd be a little too much. That's my viewpoint. But thank you for meeting with me, Matt, you were quite informative, and I appreciate it, thank you.
No, I appreciate being with you and taking the time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pierce.
Yes, sir.
Well, traveling south on the arterial, there aren't quite a few billboards, but Mike, you had a good point as well. Any other questions, board?
Yes, I want to ask questions.
And you're, are you a board member, what's your name?
My name is Apahay.
Pat, speaking in regard to this billboard?
What are you?
Are you talking about the billboard, this case we're talking about now?
No, I'm talking about my property, though.
Hey, you need to, you will need to wait.
You're going to have to wait until your case is called.
I don't know, I can't join with this exactly right now, I just call it.
Yep, that's fine, just stay on the line until we call you your address.
Okay, got you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Go ahead, board members.
Okay, any motions? So I'd like to make a motion to approve this. Okay, now, any seconds?
I'll second it, that's right.
Who was that, I'm sorry?
Who was that, Frank?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
The only thing is, this is contingent upon review from the county for the 239 Alamanan Review, I have not received that back yet, so it will be contingent upon their approval.
Okay, next case.
Oh, hey, guys, thank you, and I understand, I'll wait to hear for that approval, much appreciated.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck. Okay, ZB, are we ready? ZB A case number 33-20, 1122 Custode Ave., applicant Joseph Vatone, owners, owners. Pursuant to section 2-2967, the applicant is seeking a use variance in order to operate a neighborhood convenience above reference location.
Good evening, everyone, this is Jenna Pepinelli, I'm the attorney for the applicant. We also have on, as call-ins, Stephen Miller, he's the current owner of the building, Joseph Vatone should be on, he's the prospective purchaser and the applicant, as well as John Roy, who is the listing agent for the property.
Okay, I'm just going to carry the application with you one moment. Okay, Jenna, you can go ahead, go ahead and explain to the board what you're looking for.
Yeah, so we're looking for a use variance. The current owner has been trying to sell the property now for almost 14 years, and has been unable to do so because there's no interest in this building, being that it's zoned residential right now. I provided pictures of the inside of the building, it's industrial commercial space. Since the 1890s, it's been used as a commercial space. McLaughlin's brother Speedmill was in there, Avaco, Corrigan's, and then in 2003, after the owner at that time lost the property for taxes, the city's urban renewal agency took over the property. And when they took it over, they went to sell to Mr. Miller, the current owner, and he wanted to use it for an art studio, public art space to give lessons, and to use the second floor as his personal residence. So the urban renewal agency actually applied for his variance at that time in 2003, so that he could purchase the property. I did provide a copy of that prior variance, and the city recognized that the building's industrial nature, strictly residential use is unlikely and would be cost prohibitive to undertake, and that the neighborhood is largely non-residential, so it wouldn't alter the character of the neighborhood. And this property's really right on the line of where the city drew the zoning line, back when they imposed the zoning laws in the city, and so it's never been used for anything else other than a commercial purpose. And my clients are looking to relocate back here, start a family here. One of my applicants, her mother already owns a local business, and they want to bring a city feel, wholesome, farm-to-table-esque market to that location where they can attract people, not just from Utica, but from, you know, New Hartford and Whitesboro and surrounding areas, to come and get, you know, quality locally sourced products that differs from, I think, anything else that Utica has right now. And they plan on creating jobs, on bringing in sales tax, and, you know, making renovations to the building, and they plan to live on the second floor, which, I live on Madison, which is right up the street from there, I can tell you right now, it's vacant, so the owner lives out of town, and people seem to be congregating there, and they know it's vacant, so having a owner who also lives in the building would be very beneficial for that area. They would, you know, put in security cameras, clean it up, have it well lit, and hopefully improve that area a little bit, and bring some use to that building that has just been sitting there for years deteriorating. We are also applying for the area variance because of the 2,000 square feet, within 2,000 square feet having another neighborhood commercial retail store. There are, within that area, there are a few that meet the footage requirements with being that close, but none of them offer the same things that my clients are looking to offer, which, you know, is more of a high-end grocery store, there's not going to be any alcohol or lottery tickets or anything like that, like the other neighboring stores that might fall within that 2,000 feet, they're, they're hoping to differentiate themselves I'm open to any questions anyone might have, or any other information that me or the current owner, respective owners can provide, we'd be happy to.
Okay.
I want to ask, is there enough of a market for the type of goods they want to sell?
So, one of the applicants, her mother owns one of the businesses that's within 2,000 square feet, and she sells...
What business is that?
It's the A1 on South Street, and she can't keep up with what her customers want. So, and she's in a very, very small space down there on South Street, so there's definitely a demand, and going over with my clients, what they want to offer, it's more of like a farmer's market inside, where it's open as that industrial feel, and I do think there's a demand, especially for young people, who, you know, they want to support this farm-to-table, locally sourced product idea, because they feel like it's much better than going to, you know, a Walmart for their groceries, so I do think that they will do well, and they'll have a lot of interest.
I have a question, is this the old Milhams Market? Say that again, I'm sorry. I'm just looking at the picture, is this the Milhams Market?
No, Milhams on Rooker Street.
Oh.
This is Custode Ave.
It was, Avaco was in there, Corrigan's, and it was a warehouse, they lost the property to take back taxes.
Speak up, hey, what were they going to do about parking? You've got to break in.
Do you have to break in?
Just say something, when, when nobody's talking, say, I want to know what they're going to do with us.
Time for you to speak. I'm sorry, it's not time for you to speak, you have to wait until the public is asked to speak.
Hello?
You need to wait until the public is asked to speak, please. This is board discussion.
This is board discussion.
Go ahead, board.
What are generally going to be the hours of operation?
They are looking to have normal hours of operation, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, 9:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, closed on Sundays to spend time with their family, but not a 24-hour market like a lot of them are down there, which seems to attract some of the late-night riffraff, that's not what they're looking to do, they're looking to have normal hours, and again, live on the second floor with their families so that they can oversee the property and maintain it and keep it safe.
This is not, how many parking spots does this place have?
So, in the front, you could probably fit eight to nine, but the owner also owns both the adjoining lot. There is significant...
The lot's real rough, sir.
The lot in the back is all, is mostly paved, and there's room for more paving in between this property and continental roofing, and there is significant parking back there.
Okay, I'd like to, I mean, at least to get some sort of sketch or see something myself, honestly, that's more detailed in regards to that, because when, when you stress that this thing is so, I would say, it's unique, it's specific to people coming in all over the place to purchase goods from this place, obviously, it's a place of destination now, so it's a place you go and seek, I'd like to see how many vehicles, you know, you'll be able to park and, and, okay. Honestly, I don't think eight or nine spots are enough for a store that size, so that looks so much more available on the back with what is.
There's not eight or nine in the front.
So, this isn't a store that you would go in and shop for hours either, you know, it's, it's a specific type of product, kind of like a farmer's market where people run in, get their produce, and run out, but I think if John Roy's on the line, he'll be able to better tell you the space in the back, which we're happy to provide. I did provide an aerial view, I believe, that shows the spacing in the back, it's not just a drawing, you know, so all, there's trees in the center, I know it's, it's a dark photo, but all of that, their property line goes up to about 10 feet off of Continental Roofing's building. That, that, all of that in the back is available for parking. That, all of that in the back is available for parking, and where that, those trees are, that's an additional grassed area that could be used as well.
Am I, it's John Roy, am I allowed to pick in here?
Yeah, go ahead, John.
Not at this moment.
No, no.
No, John is, also, he is the broker, so he's helped with the application.
All right, go ahead, John, you got, you got an idea, if you can contribute to the question about the parking, go ahead, please. We're taking a little out of order.
There's actually three overhead garage doors for accessing, you know, a large part of input for loading docks and so on, but also in the back, like you're saying, without crapping off Continental, they own nine-tenths of the property and the pavement in the back, this property does, and like, like Jenna was saying, it's within 10 foot of Continental's building, so as far as parking, there's actually, I calculated it, within 14 to 16 cars could be parked easily without obstructing the overhead doors on the back, which is a grassy area. If you look at this overhead that's on the screen right now, the darker part behind the building is actually grass, which goes up to the main building, and I got to think about this, the south side of the building, so there's a quite, there's a large area for parking along the fence. That could be all paid.
Is there going to be an entrance in the rear of the property?
So, there's the entrance on the side?
Right inside of the property now, it's existing.
Okay.
Is the back the same place where they would receive goods, or where trucks would come in and unload, I mean, would it be come on a semi-truck, or what type of truck are we talking about, where, stocking and so forth?
The, the door, the main loading dock, could be modified, there's enough height to put in a 14-foot overhead door, so a tractor and trailer could back in there, and there's enough-
Is that the back, or?
... to get in there. I'm sorry?
That's in the back.
That's in the back, not in the front.
And, just to chime in, the products that my clients are looking to supply, it's, I don't anticipate tractor trailers delivering most of these things. As said in my application, you know, they're looking to, you know, locally source smaller vendors and unique products that wouldn't be coming in as much on like a commercial tractor trailer to deliver.
Okay.
Their suppliers are more unique and smaller.
20, 24-foot street job to be very easy to get in and out of there.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, I, this is, this is Steve Miller, I'm the owner. Can you hear me?
Sure, go ahead, Steve Miller.
Yes, hi, so, yeah, the driveway on the side that you look, that you see from the overhead photo, that's something that I put in and paid, paid for. I didn't need any, need any more parking than that, at, at the time, but there is plenty of parking in the back on the lot that I own there. So, the two lots are, are together, and are both for sale at the same time, it's one unit, it's not being broken up. And the, as John said, there's an overhead door in the back, and two on the side, and the, the way I see it, the, this is going to be a benefit to the, the neighborhood, and, you know, I, I lived there for a number of years, my children lived there, and we had sculpture space artists live there for a period of time.
Really?
But, yes, and the, the issue for me is that we've had a number of people come to look at buying the building, and they, they only look at it for putting in apartments, and nobody has been interested in doing that, because the, you'd have to put in a sprinkler system, or a elevator, and those kind of things, if for, to make numerous apartments in that building. And so it really has, it's not, this is the best use of it, the way it was for, used for a warehouse in the past, or a grocery store, and like it's Corrigan's and Avico were both in there over a period of time, and I believe this is the best use for this building.
And, just, just to add to that, you know, I, I think everyone on this call, if you live in the area, you know what the real estate market's like around here right now, you'd be lucky to get a property that fits the market and isn't gone in a day. This is a building that has been listed with multiple brokers, and that's been on the market for 14 years. So, in 14 years with its current use, it's just, there's no interest in using this building for residential, like Mr. Miller said, it would be astronomical to try and, you know, convert to apartments, and then to retrofit that, the rent return on that area would not produce a return for anyone.
We can add, add a comment to that, I've had, we've had, as well as, we've had numerous people, I don't have the exact count, but it's more than four or five of them anyways, that have entertained turning it into an apartment complex, and every one of them declined because the, it wasn't cost-effective to, with the square footage, and the, and the three floors, wasn't cost-effective to make the investment, the return on the investment wasn't, wasn't there for them, so they all backed, they declined a purchase, so, it definitely cannot, it's not feasible to make it into an apart, apartment house.
Okay, thank you.
And I would just add, this is the owner again, that when I bought the building from the city, the, I put a lot of money into upgrade that building to make it so that I could live there and have, have the, the, the things going on that I wanted to have there, and it's definitely, if, if I hadn't done that, it would have been vacant for a long time and just used as a warehouse. This, this is, there's been a lot of effort put into the building to upgrade what's there.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the board? Anyone out there for?
Hello?
Project?
I'm not for, no, I'm not for.
Hold on.
Hello? This is Continental Roofing.
Hey.
Go ahead.
Are you for, are you for the project? In favor of the project?
Well, I'd like to get, this is Paul Bianco, I'm at 1118 Casoot, I'm in the back, Continental Roofing, and-
Go ahead, Mr. Bianco, you're, are you for or against?
Well, I'd like to get a little more information about, am I going to get, I mean, am I still going to have a right of way here, to get in and out of here? Am I, are they going to squeeze this parking lot right up to the 10-foot line and put a fence there? I mean, you know, I, I'd like to have some more information, you know, and I plow, I've been plowing this all for 20 years, in the back there, never charged Mr. Miller anything, and I paved it too. I asked him to go half, and he said he didn't want to at the time, which is okay, and I paved it anyways, so we've been, you know-
No, that's not true.
Okay, we're not, look, look, this board's not going to get in the middle-
Okay, okay.
Excuse me, hold on a minute.
I'm sorry.
We're not going to get in between, this is between you and the owner, this is not going to affect the decision that the board's going to make.
I'm sorry.
So you, you will have to take this up with either the current owner, or the owner who is the B1.
Well, could, could we have-
Kate, are we good on that?
Yeah, yeah. I apologize, I apologize. Sorry, Steve.
Yeah, we're good on that.
Okay, thank you. Now, is there anyone out there who is for this project?
I don't want it, no.
Is there anyone out there who's against this project?
I'm against it.
I'm against it.
State your name, one at a time, state your name and address, and why you're against the project.
1112, Mrs. Badger.
Okay.
1112 Casoot Ave, and I don't want it, just to see it there, there's a corner, on the corner of South and Casoot, there's a store, right across from me, there's a store.
They park all over.
They park all over, I don't want it. Like, there's no place for parking, and it looks like a junkyard when it's all those cars are parked up there. There won't be enough parking spaces, and I don't want another store right in my backyard.
What was your name, ma'am?
Uh, Mrs. Badger.
Thank you.
I don't know if it's appropriate for me to address that, or, or not.
We're going to have, we're going to have all the people speak first, and then you can address it, Mr. Badger, if that's-
Yeah, let's, let's get through to for and against.
All right.
Okay.
Who else is against?
This is Paul Bianco.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Bianco.
1118 Casoot Ave, and I, I really don't want to say that I'm against it, I just need a little more information of how they're going to operate, you know, in the, in the back of the building here. You know, how, how close are they going to get to me? Are they going to put up a fence at the 10-foot line? Or, I mean, it's right in middle of my, well, I guess it's not my driveway, never was, but, you know, I would like to see it happen, but, you know, not if I'm going to, not if it's going to harm how I operate here. So, I mean, I guess I got to say no for now, until I get some more information. I mean, I don't know what to say, what else to say.
Mr. Bianco, if they, if they purchase the property, they are okay to put up a fence on their property line, just to let you know, it is permitted.
All right, well, then I got to say no.
Gotcha.
I got to say no, sorry. If they want to be neighborly, you know, we could be neighborly.
Mr. Bianco, I will address you when I have the opportunity.
All right, thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anybody else against the project? All right, Ms. Peppinelli, you can go ahead.
Thank you. So, first, Ms. Badger, I do understand your concerns, like I said in the beginning, I, you know, I live right up the street on Madison, where Casoot turns into Madison, and, you know, I was talking to- Okay, I was talking to several people about when you take that road up Casoot, you see all those corner stores, and people are hoitering outside, and they're open all night, and that really isn't the plan here at all, it's, it's very, very different, and they want to bring something very different. The parking would not, we wouldn't need the street for parking here, that would not be suggested with parking.
We don't need an Asian, uh, market.
If I could just finish, um-
Okay, well, we're, we're done, this, we're done with this right now, thank you, thank you for all your comments.
Joe.
Thank you, go ahead, Patty.
Joe, let Ms. Peppinelli finish speaking, please.
She'll hit, go ahead, Ms. Peppinelli, please.
I'll, I'll make it really quick, so I, and then just to address Mr. Bianco, you know, you guys have been great neighbors for a long time, you can reach-
Yes, we have.
We are willing to give you, you know, you have no recorded right away-
I think that'd be rude and not giving people a chance to talk.
I know it.
So, and we don't have any plans on changing your current arrangement right now.
You don't?
No, and we would be willing to work with you on that, to get something, there is nothing in writing now, we would vote with you on that, and we would ask for your support in doing so, but you can contact me, and I can assure you, we can work something out.
Well, if it's going by that, you know, I'm not against the store, or selling the building, not at all, but just, you know, what kind of position would that put me in here? I mean, if we could be neighborly, you know, that's fine, and I'd be for it.
We would be willing to give you the right way for egress and your current parking situation, still work those things out, you've had a great relationship thus far, and we don't plan on changing that, and I'm happy to put something in writing, we can have everyone in.
This is not time for the two of you to work out these negotiations, okay? All right, all right?
All right.
All right, thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
Okay. Okay, board, is there any motions out there?
I motion we approve, this is Mike Wolf.
Mike, I'll second that, but there's going to be some contingencies. Honestly, Joe, I'd like to see more information on this, I'm not clear on it, so I, I'm going to, I'm going to say no until I have more information on parking, on this, I, I mean, I'm looking at a black and white picture here, and I can't even tell what the building is, or what the lot is. It's not enough information for me to make it, the- Look, Dan, they're, they're going to have to get code compliance, right? Right? So, there's got to be X the number of parking spaces for that size space, correct?
Correct.
All right, so they're going to have to do that, so they're going to have to work the codes on this whole thing, they're going to have to get a certificate of occupancy, key building permit, selling permit, so, I mean, you know, there's, there's going to be some policies and procedures they're going to have to follow.
And would you like to propose to table it until you receive this information?
Well, I, I think Mike has a proposal already, so, he's got a motion to approve it, so at this point, I'm not, I would not willing to support that motion, my motion would have been to table it until I get that, so, but I, I'm simply going to vote on, I'll leave his first motion.
All right, this is Mike again, I'm kind of confused, Ned, I have no problem with tabling, I might have jumped the gun on that, you're more aware of what's going on than I am, so if you table, I'll second, otherwise I stand by my motion to approve.
This is ridiculous.
Go ahead, Patty.
Ned, would you like to make that motion?
Your motion. I, I'm not sure, I don't know if the motion on the table is, is on, or how does that work, Patty?
Kate, can they make another motion?
Yeah, they should, they should bring a new motion.
Yeah, my motion would be to do the, the table until we get more information on parking, on, on lighting, I mean, but that would be my motion.
So, why don't you make that motion, please?
I make a motion to table.
And request a parking plan, a lighting plan, what else are you, anything else?
That would, that would be, uh, it would be also, I would say confidential issue in the back, what they're planning on doing is with the egress, or, as if they're 10 feet off, off his building, he's not going to be able to pull his trucks out of that building, you know, so that, it's just one of the things that concerns me as well, so.
Somebody want a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Alfred Wendy and Michael Wolf, anybody else?
I, in favor.
Now, Ms. Peppinelli, maybe your client can take the time now, just to find out exactly what needs to get done in that building, to get it up the codes, check the, and the certificate of occupancy, what they'll need to do in there.
So, that is a question I have for the board, you know, that, this is a unique situation where the applicant is a prospective purchaser, they've already poured money into, you know, getting the zoning figured out first, to pour money into that as well, without knowing if this will work out with the zoning, is a big cost, they're, they haven't bought the building yet, it's contingent on it being able to be used for what they're looking for. So, I guess I would need to know, you know, what exactly you're looking for with a parking plan, I didn't have a surveyor come in and do all of this work because of the expense, and these are prospective purchasers, if this doesn't go through, that's a lot of expense to take on for a building that they won't be buying.
Well, I, I would-
Ms. Peppinelli, I believe what you're looking for is a general plan, just showing, you know, on a plot plan- um, you know, on a plot plan, um, of the area and draw the parking that will be available to scale, um, so that they can see how many parking spaces will be available. You can, like I said, you can use a plot plan for that. Um, also lighting, you know, just draw, again, on the plot plan where lighting will be, where it will be directed. Um, you may want to include security cameras with that, um, and then, you know, a possible agreement, uh, how it will work out with the neighbor if, in fact, they do receive this variance, um, you know, that, that they're not going to infringe on the neighbor and prohibit him from operating his business.
Right, but they do, just to clarify, they do have the right to use their whole lot.
Correct.
Work something out with the neighbor, but, you know, the neighbor's space off their building will work something out, but that's still available to be worked out between us and still owned by my client.
Yep, so I believe they're just looking to, to be assured, um, in writing that it won't prohibit the neighbor from operating his, his business.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Do you have a comment here?
At the next meeting, um, which will be September, the second Tuesday in September.
Patty?
Yep.
The Conroy, uh, if Mr. Bianco is still on, just correct me if I'm wrong. You, you purchased, um, the railroad bed and the ri, and, uh, for access, um, from your parking area.
Yes, we, yeah, we own the lot, I owned the lot on the south side of Steve's building, yes.
Yeah.
Of the...
And if it came down to it, you have, you do have...
Patty, this case started in the trailer, correct, for tonight?
John, you're, have, have that as a separate conversation, please.
Right.
Okay. We're gonna move on to the next case.
Okay.
No, I'm not worried about you. I think that they were all rude. They were.
They have no idea.
You didn't answer my question.
ZB A case number 34-20, 408 First Street. Applicant Utica Sign and Graphics. Utica Sign and Graphics, owner, paralegal.
Do you understand what I'm saying?
Are we going ahead with this next case? What are we doing here?
Go ahead.
Alright. Pursuant to section 2-2967, the applicant seeking a use variance and were to install billboard off-premise signage at the above referenced location. Okay. Ready to go? Ready to go. Utica Sign and Graphics, you here?
This is John Goll, Utica Sign and Graphics, and, uh, attempting to, um, produce a new sign for Bolson Limited, uh, where the layout hopefully will come up. Uh, it's a 28 by 144 inch, basically a 2 by 12, there you go. Header sign would be an LED internally illuminated sign and my client's requesting a, um, LED message board which would have a 50-inch by 110-inch active area, uh, which would mount to the existing poles that are there. And, um, he's looking to, uh, solicit some ads so that he can help pay the cost because they are costly. Um, that area there would be perfect for, for his location to set back, but the, uh, sign would be really, um, visible from both, uh, ends of the arterial. And we've seen, uh, some locations, so we did the sign for New York Connection and Phil had an agreement with the city to allow one of the three LED message boards that we installed, uh, to be used for ads to help to free his costs. And I see the new fitness center, um, LED message board that just went up recently is soliciting ads as well. So, we're just trying to, um, do the same because they are costly and the, uh, my player wants to invest in the sign, but he needs a little help by, um, using clients for ads.
Okay. Okay, any, any questions from the board?
I just wanted to remind the board that we're going for a use variance, um, because, uh, the board signs are allowed in an I-1 or an I-2 district. This is zone community commercial, along with area variance for the location, um, you know, close to residential districts, um, parks, historic buildings of nature, so. Along with an area variance, full tax.
As far as location, um, as far as location, I mean, um, you see the plot plan, he's like really isolated where, where he's located. I mean, there are buildings around.
Hey, but we're u, we're using the existing structure.
Yeah, there you go. So, he's really kinda like in an island, really, in that corner. And, you know, it's, it's the up and coming thing. I mean, people are, we're getting a lot of requests for, um, LED message boards, so, um, you know, it's a wait for the future.
Now, is this gonna be on 24/7 or?
It will be on, basically whatever you tell us to keep it on. It doesn't have to be on all night, obviously.
My concern is, I, I know they put a bunch of apartments, uh, next door and if it stays on at night, you know, like it's all black and night or morning, uh, it's, it could potentially be an issue for somebody.
Yeah, I, no, we can, we can adjust the timeframe. Um, also, um, if you guys approve it, we have to go to the state with your approval to see if they'll allow us as well. So, you know, the first step is to, uh, have you approve it so that we can move on forward with the state because, you know, we're on a state road there.
Okay. Anyone else or, go ahead, Patty, I'm sorry.
Also needs review from County 239 LMNN, um, and I'm awaiting their, their recommendations.
Anyone for? Against?
Uh, Matt Stubley, against, uh, 2429 Shangor, Utica Street. I just wanted to, just tell you why I only, um, we used to have two billboards on the Jeffrey Hardware Building and around 2015, when that was starting to be developed, we started a process of not wanting to lose them, but not to withhold progress in the downtown revitalization. We didn't want to stand in the way, so in May of 2017, we negotiated with the buyers to settle up and take those signs down and we did. Now, that being said, I looked at that area extensively for replacement location and I would never, um, apply for one there, um, even though I would love one there and would have done it because it's too close to, as some of the things that Patty mentioned, John Street Church, the park, the, uh, Alexander Kearney Federal Building, the regular historic district, and then the Doyle Hardware on the National Historic Register, and not to mention the properties for sale. So, what the future holds of that sign would be beyond me and, and selfishly, I certainly don't want more competition in, um, in an area that I would have sought to put a sign in, but looked at the code and said there are extensive, um, reasons why it wouldn't be approved. And that's really about it.
Can I make a comment on that?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. Well, first of all, Matt, your signs are five times bigger than our sign is ever gonna be and, uh, for revitalization, I don't know, um, we'll take a look at New York, like I mentioned, go look at the fitness center. They're more of a residential area than what we are. I mean, there are buildings, there are people around, but, you know, uh, I don't think people are gonna go to St. John's Church and gonna worry about Bolson Limited little sign on the arterial.
I would address my comments to the board that, um, while a lot of that may be true, it is, you know, got at least six reasons that it conflict with the code. And also to mention, uh, to you folks that the, um, the fitness center board is in an industrial area and does have a off-premise permit, one by the state already and obviously for the city, so they will be selling off-premise advertising. But off-premise advertising is a unique business. Um, frankly, a size that's gonna be posted here be more distracting than being able to be seen and purchased. I just think that, uh, they have trouble offsetting it. And as I spoke to Mike, just to let him know that if you do go off-premise, then that takes away any motion, and I know you know this too, but it takes away any motion, so it's off-premise static only every eight seconds. So, if, and I say if I was a small guy...
Gentlemen, thank you, thank you, man.
Yeah, thank you.
Anybody else again?
Okay, board, any other questions? Any motions? I'll make the motion to approve this.
Okay, I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, you're all set.
You're all set, um, John, once I receive, um, the recommendations from the county, which should be within this week, I'm assuming, um, I'll let you know and then you can go ahead and get the resolution to get with you to the state.
Awesome, thanks so much. Thank you.
Okay, ZB A case number 35-20, 321 Lamond Place, applicant John Gollden, owner John Gollden. Pursuant to section 2-2967, the applicant is seeking an area variance in order to legitimize the placement of two shipping containers at the above referenced location.
Good afternoon, can, uh, anybody hear me or am I still on mute?
No.
Uh, my name is George Murad, uh, I'm appearing on behalf of, uh, John Gollden. The first thing I, I need to mention to you is I just got brought in on this, uh, a few days ago, so I was not involved in any of his initial planning and discussing, uh, with the, uh, city on what he proposed to do. Mr. Gotten acquired this property sometime around April or May of this year from the estate of the Weyden. What he'd like to do is, uh, get a area variance so that he can maintain, uh, these two storage units, metal storage units, as you can see them there. In the back of his property, uh, the home situated on Lamond Place, and what he wants to do is have these back about 45 feet from his home. What, I don't know where, uh, the number of 640 square feet came up. Uh, what he would like to do is keep these units approximately 10 feet apart and he would like to, uh, uh, enclose them in some fashion, uh, with a 26-foot frontage, 10 feet apart, 40 foot length, so that he can maintain them, a form of mini garage. He's willing to work, uh, aesthetically with the character of the neighborhood and if he has to vinyl side them or wooden side them, he is, uh, willing to do that. Uh, there are other structures not too far off from his residence, old barn, metal, uh, barns with, uh, farm equipment outside. Uh, so what he is asking is to, uh, allow him to have a 26 by, uh, 40 with the, with the 10-foot, the 26, including the 10-foot, so that he can, uh, go in and out. He's willing to put doors on them, panel them, whatever on his property. So, that's what he's, uh, basically looking to do, a variance for that. And again, he's willing to make those aesthetically, uh, appealing so that neighbors don't have to look at tin or metal siding, uh, and whatever has to be done. And there is no garage on that property, border garage, uh, and does not have the ability to build a garage. But would like to, uh, get the variance so that he can enclose those.
How long have those containers been there now?
He just acquired the property in April.
So, he's had, he's had time to make it look a little neater than that, correct?
Well, the problem is he can't get all of the, uh, materials with COVID or get the people to help him do it. But he's, he's explaining to me that anything behind there, that's all gone and any debris laying against it is all...
It's still there, I just went by there today.
The debris? He says, he says it does not look exactly like that.
I, I got a question. If he's got those containers there, why does he have all the stuff outside the containers though? It doesn't take much to put the stuff in a container. Or, or the containers are too full and he's got too much stuff, so.
Well, I guess, sir, he can answer that better than I can. I'll let him answer. John, why didn't you answer, uh, I thought to move what was hanging outside?
I have to move quite a bit inside. A little more to be moved than that.
He's 3 years old. I'm by myself. What he's saying, he's trying to do it little by little because he's 65 years old, not in good condition, so he's working. He says it's all gone. Says he removed that. It's all gone.
Hi, my name is, uh, Mike Cott. I actually live 228 Beemy Place directly behind the property. Based upon that comment, if he's not capable of...
Hold on, we'll, we'll get to the for and against. You'll have your opportunity.
I got one more question, John. Does he, I mean, has he got some kind of scrapping business when he's, I mean, has he got all this metal around there or?
No, he does not have a scrapping business. He's not running any business off that property.
Okay, hey, um, Patty, can we go through that again? Because, I mean, I, I'm seeing all I need to see. I don't know about the rest of the board.
Uh, go ahead with the for, please, Joe.
Okay, anyone here for? Against?
Yes, I'm against.
Against.
I know it's difficult, um, if you can just try and state your name and address and then you can go ahead and, um, I know it's on top of one another, but we're gonna try our best.
My name is Celeste Friend. I'm the councilperson for this ward. I've spent a lot of time in the last couple of days in and around this neighborhood and in the budding side yards. These are shipping containers. The, they are industrial objects meant to be in an industrial context, not meant to be in a city neighborhood. They're, all of the grounded properties are very nicely trapped. Uh, if you are in either of the budding properties on Lamond, he's, uh, look you right in the face, the long side of them, and I've also visited the budding property on, one budding property on Beemy. For all three of those properties are a great big eyesore, um, as well as various, um, equipment. Uh, there's an old oil tank, I'd like to know what's in that oil tank for environmental reasons. So, as representing, um, these neighbors from, um, in South Utica, I'm absolutely against this. I encourage the board to help us uphold the values of our, of our... I encourage the board to help us uphold the values of our, of our property and values of these nice residential areas. Thank you, and I'm gonna go ahead and move that.
Hey, who's first?
My name is Kathy Tamer, I live on the corner of Lamond and Quentin. I've lived in this house for sixty-four years, and the neighbors with the declining areas in Utica have made an extra effort to make improvements to all of our houses to keep the value up. Since this gentleman's moved in, every day there's more and more junk put there, and what you don't see is that he's got a drive-through on his driveway, an awning full of crap, plus he's got a trailer, a mobile trailer in the driveway, and his vehicles to the side, and he's had numerous people there since he's moved in helping with stuff, and every day it looks more and more like Fred Sanford's junkyard. And it's really a sin that this neighborhood has fought so hard to look nicely. Would you want to look at that the rest of your life?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next.
I'm, uh. Go ahead.
Uh, my name is Michael Kaut, I live directly behind the property.
Michael, I'm here last.
Kaut, K-A-U-T-H.
Thank you.
Um, I live directly behind the property, and in the beginning of the conversation, the gentleman said that he's elderly and he hasn't had the time and he's not capable of getting it taken care of, so I just don't have confidence that he's gonna correct the situation inside it based upon that. Um, it is, it is an eyesore. If it was just the containers and everything else looked clean and neat, I'd be okay with it, but this, this is the city, it's not the country, the amount of equipment back there, it's just not accessible.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, this is Lee Island, Bearmy Land, and I'm at three twenty-five Lamond Place, I'm right next door. And I'm against the containers. And I will second what everyone said about the property as well. I think if that was allowed with those containers, I don't know what would stop someone else from doing the same, or would prevent Mr. Gordon from doing the same. I feel very strongly about it. So again, I vote against, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, this is Tony Don George at four eleven Keck Place. We live just around the corner from this location. It's Don and Tony, James George, Don and James George, four eleven Keck Place, and we live just around the corner from this house and just feel that it will bring all of our property down. So I'm against it.
Okay, thank you.
This is Terry Lloyd, with my husband Tom, we live at four oh six Quentin Road, around the corner. I own a few different properties on Quentin Road, and family is, is always around. An eyesore when we run. If he was going to keep it neat, being sixty-five years old, I hope he's able to keep that property neat and clean, and I do not feel he is capable of doing that. It is not picked up as a, as a power of, I passed by the house, I am totally against this.
This is Kathy Tamer, and if I'm allowed to say something. All right, this gentleman says he's sixty-five years old and cannot keep it up. I'm sixty-seven years old and I live a couple of doors away from him, and my yard looks wonderful, and he had to have people help him bring that in. So I don't think his age should be a matter about.
Be a matter about.
Because this home before he bought it had elderly women and it was pristinely cleaned every single day he moved in, and each day he's there, it looks more like crap.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who's against?
Yes, my name is Carly Wolf, I'm at three twenty-nine Lamond Place, I'm two houses down, I can, I see the containers from my property, you can see them driving down the road, they are eyesore, and I'm concerned for the property values around here. Those containers might be good in Panjshay City, but we're not in an agricultural setting. This is in Panjshay, and if one is allowed, how many other people in South Utica or else are gonna end up with, you know, thinking shipping containers are a problem? And it's going, yeah, he's going to try to make him more aesthetically appealing, and I can appreciate that, but at sixty-five, if he can't maintain what he has right now, and I, I do have a lack of confidence that he's gonna be able to, that he'll follow through with making it, you know, with the A P I. So they're, it's tough to be surrounded by fences, you'd still be able to see them if the fences are up, and, you know, they're a bit of a safety hazard, I think, there's a lot of kids in the neighborhood. So I just, and without having a legitimate business to run out of it, I would much, much rather see a shed or, you know, something more appropriate for this area than two shipping containers.
Thank you. Any others?
Joe, I have several letters that I need to read.
Okay.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak? The first letter, as a resident of the city of Utica on Lamond, I have a concern with the shipping crates mentioned. The containers similar to those used freight trains are old, rusted, and have no place in a residential neighborhood. The perimeter of the crate is scattered with miscellaneous garbage and construction waste. I can only imagine what it will be on the inside. It is an eyesore for me to wake up every morning, and this is a nice, quiet, and clean street, and I would like to keep it that way. Signed, a concerned neighbor. The next one, this letter is in regard to John Gordon's request for a variance to increase the allowed existing size of storage from one hundred square feet to two eight by forty shipping containers currently in place, located in the rear yard of three twenty-one Lamond Place. On five twenty-two, Mr. Gordon placed his first eight by forty container. Five twenty-six, the codes officer visited the site to inform Mr. Gordon that his property is zoned as residential and that. Per section two dash twenty-nine dash four ninety-two of the zoning ordinance of the city of Utica, Mr. Gordon ignored the zoning criteria and brought in a second eight by forty shipping container on five twenty-nine. While I understand Mr. Gordon needs storage for him, his many items, I strongly disagree with the variance for the following reasons. Number one, should this be allowed, what will prevent Mr. Gordon from bringing in additional containers, other existing, and new residents from doing the same? Once this action is permitted, a pattern is set forth for others to follow. Number two, containers of this size and style are not within the character of the neighborhood. Number three, Mr. Gordon's lack of respect or comprehension for rules were displayed on five twenty-nine. He placed a second container after being told the first one was not within zone slash zone slash codes parameters. Number four, the containers pose a safety issue for children as letters on each container be easily. Number five, the containers may significantly reduce the view of the surrounding homes due to the unappealing view that is not in the neighborhood's vector. Because of the mammoth size and height, a side lawn fence of six feet high will not establish a site barrier. Number six, many neighbors have expressed concern, not only of the two containers, but the number of scrap piles back at side yard approximately six, in which there is scrap metal, wood, and equipment. It has quickly become an eyesore for all surrounding neighbors and frankly, concern for infestation of rodents in said piles. Therefore, Mr. Gordon not only lacks respect for authority, he also lacks respect for his fellow neighbors and neighborhood. Number seven, I have incurred over six thousand dollars to implant twelve seven to eight feet high pines to create a visual barrier and to have the property surveyed to determine the side property line, so to install a ninety-foot fence between Mr. Gordon's and my property. The cost of the fence is approximately seventy-five hundred dollars. Should Mr. Gordon, and close the containers in building style, I confirm that I intend to remove the existing containers. Mr. Gordon can have the opportunity to present a proposal for constructing and outbuilding, and other variants can be filed, proper permits obtained in the community, and board review again at a later date. I also ask the committee to establish stability and steps for Mr. Gordon to follow regardless of what the outcome will be at this meeting. Thank you for your time and consideration, Leila Borland. The next one is. Good afternoon, I have attempted to, certainly failed in development. My name is Les Dunlop, I live at one twenty-three Laurel Place, previously across the street from the person with the shipping containers. He turned a beautiful home into a salvage yard, and has attempted to do the same in the new neighborhood that he lives now. I am sure you have reached many quotes in place from other residents on my street, and I am sure he hasn't done anything illegal, however, the hoarding behavior displayed causes other issues, rats, mice, raccoons, woodchucks, and skunks, roaming free causing disease, although not legal, but very concerning. The garbage was never caught, but the caustic fumes from the burns were choking and making you stay inside on beautiful fall days. You are probably asking why I'm emailing you, he moved off my street, my daughter is in the process of buying a house, the street is waiting for tonight's decision to pursue. I urge the city to make a stand, the variance process has, asks permission of your neighbors to do something that, done before you pursue, please not allow this light to continue in our neighborhood, sincerely, Les Dunlop. The next one is, hi, I am emailing you on behalf of my mother Joan, who resides at four oh seven Keck Place in Utica. She feels the property at three two one, um, be cleaned up and the containers removed. She feels that they live in a beautiful neighborhood, and it is terrible eyesore for the street. Thank you, Michelle Park. The next one is, I am bidding as a resident of Lamond Place to express my views regarding Mr. Gordon's request for an area variance in order to legitimize the placement of two shipping containers at above referenced location. His request to exceed the permitted maximum size for a storage structure in a residential, in my view, highly protest looking and unwelcome eyesore for the neighborhood. In addition, these shipping containers could be a potential danger for neighborhood children. These containers do not belong in a residential neighborhood and should not be allowed to stay. No houses on the street contain any structure similar to the two shipping containers that are currently in Mr. Gordon's backyard. In addition, these shipping containers are over five times larger than the permitted length for a storage structure in a residential area. Also, I believe that if you allow this variance, the property value of the surrounding homes will go down in value. The section of Mr. Gordon's backyard that currently contains these shipping containers was previously pleasant looking and green in nature with no structure sitting on it. The lot now looks unsightly with these very large shipping containers. In addition, Mr. Gordon has brought in scrap metal, wood, rubbish, and debris that he has deposited next to the containers, making the yard look even more untidy. Mr. Gordon also has a large amount of farm equipment that is parked in his yard, which in my opinion should not be allowed in a residential neighborhood. Thank you. Sincerely concerned. Those are the letters that I have against.
Okay, thank you.
And Joe, just to let you know, this also has to be reviewed from the county, two thirty-nine L M N.
Okay. Okay, any board, any other questions, concerns?
Joe, before we go to motions, this is Mike Wolf, I'm a resident of the neighborhood and I have to recuse myself at this point in time.
Okay, any motions? Well, I'll make a motion tonight.
I'll second that.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion.
What's your intention to be removed by?
You gotta, I, I would like to say next week, to tell you the truth.
Sorry, who made the motion, Ned? And who seconded?
Ned.
Okay. And are you going to put a removal date?
Absolutely. About thirty days.
Thirty days from today's meeting?
How about two weeks, then? Thirty days, get the containers out of there.
Thirty days from today?
Thirty days, thirty days is fine, to give this man an opportunity to get them out, and we don't have to get nasty and say fifteen days because he's discussing whether it should be thirty or more. So I'd appreciate thirty days for him to get these out of there.
Well, Mr. Murad, Mr. Murad, is that, well, thirty days, will he be able to do it? Tell me, I mean, if. Let's give him a date that he can work with, then.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. What they're willing to do is to give you a certain amount of time, reasonable amount of time, to get those out of there, okay? Otherwise, you're gonna be fined a significant amount of money. So I don't, you're gonna have to find someplace to put them. So you tell the board, realistically, you're gonna have to figure it out. You're gonna have to figure it out, or you're gonna get fined. So how much time to find a different place to store your goods? The one for thirty, realistically.
Just ask me thirty days to get the containers out of there, but with inside the containers.
You're gonna have to find a place to put them.
And he got to find a spot this place.
Unfortunate, well, that's not to make it look like that.
I wasn't gonna make it like that.
How many, how much, how much time?
I was gonna fix them up.
John, John, I've already told you enough. Now you gotta come up with a period of time. Or they're gonna give you a maximum amount of time, because you can't come up with a maximum.
Mr. Murad, you said he purchased the property in April and had these in by May?
I think it was sometime in April, don't, don't let me get that.
So he had them installed in less than a month.
That may be the case, I don't know when they had them.
Okay, all right, all right, how about by September thirtieth?
I'm sorry, what was that?
September thirtieth. That's, that's our final, that's it, September. That's over forty-five days.
September thirtieth.
Yep, September thirtieth.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So September three, it's twenty twenty, they need to be removed.
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a nice evening.
You too. ZBA case number thirty-six twenty, thirteen hundred Stuben Street, applicant Bahay, owner Bahay, pursuant to section two dash two nine sixty-seven, the applicant is seeking an area variance in order to erect a fence at the above referenced location.
Well, I'm there? Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, um, just explain, if you want to, please explain to the board what you're looking to do, tell them about your fence, and I will display the photos on the computer so that they can see them, okay?
Okay. I'm ready to explain a little bit?
Yep, go ahead, just let them know what kind of fence you're gonna be putting up.
I put a chingley and a piper behind my neighborhood to my fan, my old fans, to and Leah Street, and go to, and Stuben Street, and go to another side and across Stuben Street to my front house, my old house, all of it. Go like one, one go across, and behind my neighborhood here, and across my, my property is seventy feet, and approximately seventy feet to Leah, Leah two, and Stuben, the quarter, then come to, and Stuben crossing my house, one, three, oh, four Stuben, and across everything there. and across everything there. Yeah.
Okay, so, as you can see, Pa has a little difficulty with English, so I'm just gonna assist him. He... This yellow house that you're seeing on your screen is his home. He's looking to go in his house and come out towards the corner with a five-foot chain link fence and down along Leah Street and along this side property here, the neighboring property. He owns this property on the corner. He's looking to enclose it. He said he has difficulty with people walking through and dropping their garbage, and he'd like to have area for his children. Is that correct, Pa?
Yes, ma'am, yes, Patty.
And this is the front of his home. So he's looking to go out towards the corner, you know, where this white... Pa, are you replacing that white picket fence?
Yeah, this is a white one, it's broken already, Patty. People break it already. I take it all of them. That's why I got... I want to do a chain link and a higher, like a five foot. It's really, if I can, you know?
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, people broke it already. This, I don't know, they break it every night, and I'm gonna take it, I'll throw it, go there, all of it.
Is it a regular chain link fence, or is it colored, or...?
Chain link is a little like a Stanley chain link, like a normal, like a regular chain link. It's a little, little hollow.
Like silver, silver or gray in color, like a metal, Pa?
Yeah, I do, I do in silver, Patty.
Silver. So a regular chain link?
Okay, what about the... He's gonna go all the way to the corner with the fence?
The inside corner is...
Yeah, I go all the way. Yeah.
Is it gonna be right along the sidewalk?
Yeah, behind the sidewalk, yeah.
Yep.
I leave it like a 20-inch far with the sidewalk. It should be good.
How far, Pa?
12, 20 inches.
12 inches, like one foot from the sidewalk? Kind of like where your white fence was?
White fence is not...
Stay, right? He's just gonna expect it.
White fence gotta be... Yeah, white fence gotta be like not too much, Patty. This is not mine. I do not do that. This is almost before the house, they do that. I do not do that.
The previous owner?
But this is too close. Yeah.
Okay.
Too very close. Gotta be like a five inches something.
Now, Leah Street, how far will you be from the property line on Leah Street?
Leah Street gotta be across all the way down the 1304 my house, my old, my old, the empty property, and to my, gotta be 100 over. I have a 51 and another one is a 61 something.
Pa, how far... How far on Leah Street, that other house? How far from that?
Oh, house...
There you're gonna be?
Leah, Leah, Leah Street and Stuben is my property. It's 70 feet, 70 feet by 100.
No, I know that, but how far from that house are you gonna put your fence? You know that house?
Oh, how far?
This Leah Street. The house on Leah Street. How far are you gonna be away from there?
For the neighborhood?
The neighbor house. The house that's on Leah...
Yeah, I would do this around, around this two feet and a 24-inch wide because I'm gonna have a surveyor pole and the property line is a pole. And so I gotta do a far away later base. Not too far away, not too close for the pole, surveyor pole. They have a middle one there and my surveyor showed me and...
So you've had it, right?
Yeah, they have it.
So the picture that I'm showing right now shows that the other house kind of has a handicap ramp in the back. Is that still there?
They don't have a handicap, uh, handicap.
So there's a sidewalk. There's a sidewalk that goes Leah Street, and it goes alongside of that house? And it goes along your property? Where are you gonna put the fence?
I know this sidewalk is, this sidewalk behind the sidewalk is the surveyor, surveyor pole over there. Surveyor pole is to close the sidewalk. They don't have anything property there. But I don't fancy closing the sidewalk. I know I do it like a far away little bit, like one feet and two feet around there. See what they have a space little bit, you know? Something like that. But I, I, at least gotta be 12 feet, 12 inches over, 24 inches over, you know?
From your survey?
Yeah.
At least 12 or 24 inches from your survey pole? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, surveyor pole is closer, there's a guy on the sidewalk, behind the sidewalk, closer.
To the neighbor's sidewalk, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So board, what he's saying is that that sidewalk that you're seeing along the side of that property, his property goes very close to that. So he said he do 12 inches or 24 inches from that so that there is a little bit of space on the other side of that sidewalk?
What about the tree?
What about what?
Did you see that tree there that's along the handicap ramp? Isn't that a tree?
Pa, there's a big tree next to your house. Are you gonna, what are you gonna do? Around it, what are you gonna do?
Uh, there's a tree, it's a, Patty. Right now, this is my neighborhood, it's, I don't know. They don't want me cut down. They fight with me, there's a tree. But right now, it belongs to me, but they don't want me cut down.
So where are you gonna put the fence? Under the tree or behind the tree? Where are you gonna put the fence?
No, I'm behind the tree. I gave it like they belong, belong to the tree there. I don't want anymore of that, from the tree.
So are you gonna put... How are you gonna put the fence behind that tree? I don't think there's enough room, is there? You're gonna put it?
Yeah, but if you, I put it from the tree little bit. I shoot it so far away as surveyor pole. It's gotta be 24, 23 something, too far.
Looks like that tree, though. It looks like that tree is really close to that guy's sidewalk.
Yeah, and the sign, that sign is not correct. This is a sign, this is a guy and a surveyor sign. It's a pole, it's not right.
So it looks like, it looks like that tree is that other person's. It doesn't look like it's yours. From this picture, it shows the survey pole?
I have a map, Patty. I have a map. It belongs to me, I have a map and everything. And so, it's the one, it's a yellow one. And so, this is a guy, it's a very important pole. The pole is now only tabular. They move it everywhere, they move it itself. This is neighborhood moving itself. Yeah. Because they try to, they try to cheat it, it's a tree. They try to cheat it, it's a tree, and they try and take my property.
Hey Patty, this is Mike Wolfe. We need to keep his fence at least a couple feet off of that sidewalk of the other person's house. Can he keep it inside of that tree? Two feet off of the sidewalk that addresses the other house?
Yeah, you can, you can ask that. So Pa, you understand?
Yeah, I can't keep it, no.
He doesn't want the tree inside the fence. Wants the fence to go around that, in front of that tree so it's not inside the fence. He wants, he wants the fence and the tree, the neighbor's sidewalk.
Sidewalk, okay, all right.
Right? Understand?
Yes, that's correct.
That's what it's gonna have to be.
Pa, do you understand that?
Why, you try to say?
Hold on a minute, Patty. He doesn't need a variance for that portion of the fence.
Right. Anything else?
Just for the front of the property?
For the front. What are we gonna do about that corner? You wanna let him go to the corner?
It's a chain link fence, you can see, Pa, you can see through it.
Okay.
See through it.
I, you were all of them around, around my empty, my empty yard and by neighborhood and everything there. I gotta fence it all of it.
The only variance we're required to grant him is for the front, the two front yards.
Right, and beyond the front of that house. That's true. Thanks, Dan.
Okay, anyone here for or against?
Um, I don't know yet. They let me do and how far away? I want to know that one.
Pa, they're gonna decide right now, okay? Hold that one second.
Yeah.
I would have been...
Go ahead.
About two feet off the sidewalk.
Two feet off the sidewalk?
Any seconds?
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Patty, didn't you already talk to him about a foot off the sidewalk, or no?
Yeah, but if you want two feet, that's fine. Pa? Pa? What they ask is that you come two feet away from the sidewalk. So you gotta come towards your house, two feet, on each side. Okay?
Not a problem, yeah. I know, how about this neighborhood? Neighborhood side?
Yep, on both, on both. Two feet from...
Both at two feet.
Each sidewalk.
Uh, two feet and a surveyor pole on the my property, two feet, right?
Yep.
Okay. How about this guy, this guy gotta be, they gotta fence it. I wonder if they gotta fence it, the old fence.
I'm not understanding.
Patty? Patty, can you hear me?
Pa, just call me tomorrow and I'll explain it to you, okay?
Okay, Patty. I let me do a five foot, right?
Yep, five foot chain link. But call me, call me tomorrow and I'll explain it to you.
All right, Patty, thank you. Thank you so much, thank you everyone.
Thank you.
You too.
Thank you.
Bye bye.
Bye now. ZBA case 3720, 529 to 533 Jefferson Ave. Applicant Teresa Perry, owner Teresa Perry, pursuant to section 2-29, the applicant is seeking an area variance in order to legitimize the installation of a fence at the above referenced location.
Hi.
Is this Teresa?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Teresa, just explain what it is that you installed.
Okay, yes, ma'am. Initially, I'd like to apologize. I didn't know I needed to get a permit or seek permission for this fence because I'm a first time homeowner. This was my father's home. I came up from North Carolina and purchased it after he passed away last year. There was an existing chain link fence. I care for my disabled brother here, and across the street is a lot of rental property and some undesirable types of people that live there that were making fun of and instigating issues with my disabled brother. So I put up a fence. There was no digging. I just tied approximately a five-foot stockade type fence, tied it into the existing chain level fence. The only neighbor who is along my property, shares property with me, Joanne next door, I spoke with her before, during, and after the installation of the fence. She had no problem with it. As a matter of fact, she introduced me to her handyman slash contractor, and he's the one who installed the fence. So I honestly just didn't know there was any issue with it, and I do apologize for that.
So board, this is what the fence, the fence looks like. She has installed it. It's not, it is a corner property. However, the fence is not towards the corner.
Right.
You'll see, there's a chain link fence toward the corner. Teresa, this is six feet high?
I believe it's more like five feet. I can check to be sure if you want.
Board, any questions?
I'm sorry?
No, the board, any questions, board?
I don't have any.
How far off of the sidewalk is that?
It's along the edge of the sidewalk.
It's right on the sidewalk?
It's maybe a couple of inches inside the sidewalk.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Anyone here for or against? Hey, any motion?
I make motion to approve, so let it stay as is.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, who seconded that?
Hi, this is Frank.
Teresa, you're all set.
Okay, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
We'll need to go ahead and get a fence permit now after the fact. So if the codes department a call tomorrow, their phone number is 315-792-0163.
Okay, I need to apply now for a permit?
Yeah, a fence permit.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, thank you so much, everybody.
You're welcome, have a great evening.
You too.
Anybody else, sir? Other than the board?
Have a good night.
Yeah, real good.
Take care, guys, this is a good one.
Hey, Mike?
Yeah.
That fellow there, Mr. Godin?
Yes, sir.
He lived on Laurel, and we had a case about five, six years ago.
Oh, that's not bad.
The neighbor on Demi wanted to... Remember that, Demi?
That's not the same guy, is it?
It's the same guy, me, and me, Joe Pori, and what, oh my God.
Yeah, I remember the case.
Yeah, we went over to the house. The house on Demi. This guy was off the wall. We looked in his backyard, went over to see him, and he got really threatening and the whole nine yards.
We've had, we've had some... Joe, we've had some issues in the neighborhood already. He's been aggressive with some of the neighbors. We're a little concerned about his response to this decision, but we'll handle it in a neighborly fashion, I'm sure. We'll see how it happens. Take care, guys.
Good luck with that, Mark.
The judge is, after September, contact his attorney and bug the crap out of him.
You got it, you got it.
He already called me.
Awesome. All right, hey, everybody, good job, take care.
Yeah, good job. Good night, everybody.